Just a second.
Hello.
We're slowly coming back.
You made it back, okay Renee, good.
Good. Hi Andrea.
Taryn, can you hear me?
I can, you did it.
Oh gosh, can I get a big star?
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Just a minute, my wife just got here, tell her that I got in here.
All by himself.
He did it all by himself.
So proud.
Don't tell her that I was 10 minutes late for the meeting at 5:30.
I didn't have to, you told her yourself.
Oh my, shame on him.
I think I was linking into this one, I didn't read it very well, I was trying to get in.
Oh gosh, okay, have a good one.
Bye bye.
I found that information on which operating agreement things we were using, so I'm gonna attach it into an email and send it to Jolene and Nikki and Mike.
Thank you Renee.
You're welcome. I'll be right back, I have a horse out.
Good luck.
Jolene, how are things there?
Good, good.
As for not in a meeting, I had my follow-up with my doctor and I'm A+.
Good.
I even got a watch on screen as the, as they televised my problem.
Since we're not in the meeting yet either, I will update you, Dave has a treatment.
Want to give me a thumbs up or? Shelby, are we ready to go, or Taryn, or?
All board members are present.
Okay, well at 7 o'clock, I'll call the board meeting to order April 2020, and we're on time this time, 7pm. Welcome all the visitors who are watching or listening to the meeting. And last time I, so the next item would be the flag salute, I skipped over that, but I think we can still say the pledge of allegiance, couldn't we? So we will, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America.
To the Republic. One nation under God.
Invisible.
With liberty.
And justice for all.
Here we go, I have a flag, well I don't have a flag. Next item would be agenda changes, and I did mention that I would like a motion to add an item to the agenda, which would be a motion to authorize the board chair to negotiate with the superintendent to renew our contract. Do I hear a motion? Yes.
I need to ask a question, Shelby, there's, my daughter just texted, wanted to know how to get in, is it on the district website?
Yes, it is on the district website. Was it your daughter Annie? Because I do see Annie's on it. Okay.
Okay.
I see, Annie, if you have any problems, Annie, just notify me in the chat box, please.
Alright, thank you, sorry.
That's fine, as long as everyone's here. So again, I'd like a motion to add an agenda item to authorize the board chair to negotiate with the superintendent for a contract extension. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask a clarifying question for that one? Or is that gonna come back in front of the board, or to vote for that contract, right?
Yes, well I mean, the reason it's on there, we discussed it when we met Tuesday, and I thought we had all of the discussion, so, and we agreed to vote on it at this meeting.
I'm just trying to understand what exactly we're voting on. So are you gonna go and whatever you say goes, or she wants?
Oh, I can make the motion, if I can make the motion, I'd make the motion. So you'll know exactly.
Voting on, we need, we haven't talked about any, any terms.
My question is, are we, are we voting on for you to go negotiate, and then that's gonna come back in front of the board for us to finalize?
No.
Whatever the negotiation says.
The motion, and then you'll know what I'm trying to say. Would that help to clarify? If I make the motion?
Yes.
Brian, I guess ask Brian, Brian, is it okay for the board chair to make the motion?
It is, but I think you should clarify that you're just proposing an agenda change to add it to the business section, isn't that right, Mike?
Yes.
You're not, you're not moving to move for an approval right now, you're just asking for an agenda change to add an item to the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add a discussion action item to discuss the contract extension for the superintendent.
I second.
A motion in a second, I'll do a roll call if I could, I'm looking, Eric, vote yes or no, Eric?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Blanca?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we all vote for that, thank you. Next item is item five on the consent items, the minutes, the personnel and the bills. Again, we discussed it when we just met, any other comment or question? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent items.
I second.
I have a motion in a second, so we'll do a roll call, vote again, I vote yes, Blanca, vote?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Eric? Eric? Renee?
Okay, sorry, I, yes.
Okay.
My vote. I'm sorry, my vote is yes.
Okay, Eric, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but then your vote?
Mine, yeah, sorry about that, I was on a different screen looking at our agenda, and it wouldn't let me unmute it, I couldn't get back to the screen.
So all vote in favor of that, again, thank you. So next item would be board bids, any volunteers? Blanca, maybe I'll start with you then.
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
Renee?
I saw the Alameda School administrators and teachers did a really cute dancing video on Facebook. It was quite cute, the kids were impressed.
And I did see it too, if I could have that, so. Derek, any board bid?
Congratulations to Principal Lisa Longoria.
That's an excellent comment.
Yes.
I agree.
Thank you.
The other comment I have is just to thank all the staff, the faculty, the parents, the students to get through the last month. I can't believe that since, we haven't, it's the last time we met, all of this started, and how, how difficult it must be. I try and watch that, so again, I appreciate all the hard work for everyone. So maybe next, finance report, Mary Jo Evers?
So like we talked about in the work session, we kind of are going to coast through the end of this year, hopefully, so that we can go over the next couple years and not have any impacts from the COVID downturn, the economy and all of those things. The other thing that we've been working on is doing our jobs in a different way. I've learned that there's things you take for granted, like printing out hundreds of letters that go out at the end of the year, that you just give to secretaries and they just magically come back, and so now we get to email them out, and it's not as easy, so I'm really appreciative of the stuff that those secretaries at the buildings do for me.
And then Mary Jo, could I, do you have the emergency declaration?
That's in Nikki's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got, missed that, okay. So I guess any comment from Mary Jo, I don't have anything to ask this time about checks, so. Blanca, any question for Mary Jo?
No, I don't have any.
Renee?
No.
Derek?
No.
And Eric, so. Then we'll go on, if we could, to the superintendent's report, and I just want to be sure everyone received a copy of that. I think sometimes it's easier to see it all written out. So again, we'll have a report from superintendent.
Yeah, I'm going to start doing a written report to attach to the board agenda, that way that the board will be able to, if they have any questions, they can ask me of those. I may add some things if, as the week goes on, there's something else that we need to add, but, but I thought it would be easier for you, especially with this format, to actually read it ahead of time, and I'll, I'll be sending that out with the board agenda the seven days prior. First on there is the emergency declaration, this is just like the notice that we did when we were back in the days of Snowmageddon, and we had to quickly and efficiently make some decisions. And so, as you know, we've gone in through this COVID-19 pandemic, and have had to respond quickly to that, and make some decisions about distance learning for our students. And then on top of that, we had an earthquake, and the, Bob had gone around and checked all of the buildings the evening after the earthquake, and didn't see any damage. However, the next day, we noticed there were some, some leaks at Aiken, and that, those leaks were underground, and they were in the tunnel between the main building and the annex building, and that involved several main water lines, so, kind of challenging to get to for sure. So we had to jump in and make decisions about getting somebody in to help start to dry out stuff, and, and then get ahold of some contractors to do some, some work. It doesn't look like insurance is going to cover the cost of this, because there was specific language about the footprint of the building, it wasn't within the footprint of the building, because it was between two buildings, and so they did hire an agency to come in and to do some assessments, that's gonna be, that they're gonna pay for, but, but it's something that we need to get taken care of right away, and, and at this point, trying to get bids and such from folks is a challenge, given that people are working from home, and, or not working because they're laid off, and so on and so forth. So this emergency declaration just allows us to go in and, and take care of some of those jobs right away, without delaying them through a bidding process. Now, in my, in my summary, I talked about needing to buy additional technology. We certainly aren't going to be frivolous about that, we, Todd and his department utilize many of the same companies, and have some deals worked out for those, and they're still going to be thoughtful about that. But if we were to wait to go out to bid, then it could be next December, by the time we get some of those items, because they're all on back order. We anticipate, we've passed out lots of Chromebooks and technology devices, we anticipate we're not gonna get some back, even though we, we have agreements signed, and they may become, coming back damaged and such, so we want to be prepared for that when they, when they do return. So this, this is just allows us to go ahead with those processes in getting things repaired, or ordering needed equipment at this difficult time. Any questions?
Nikki, if I could, didn't I re, I thought I heard the federal government may have funds to help all the schools with the additional cost to educate, or is that in your report?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about, talk about that in a second, I just wanted to make sure that if you had any questions specifically about the emergency declaration, you could ask those.
So have we already?
Go ahead, Renee.
Have we already ordered the Chromebooks?
No, not yet.
What is the, what kind of a cost are we looking at?
For facilities repair?
No, I apologize, specifically about the Chromebook.
Oh, you know, I don't know yet, that's something that before we really made that decision, we wanted to have a couple things clear, and we, I did want to gather more information on this CARES Act, which I'm gonna talk about in a minute, which I'm sure, Eric, you already kind of know maybe a little bit about, because I think the CARES Act also involves more than schools, but local governments. And, but, but it could go beyond the, the price tag if we order a bunch of what the limit is of my, of my spending, or, or what, what we would have, it definitely will go, let me back up, it'll definitely go beyond what we would be required to put out for bid, if that makes sense.
Okay, so we're more or less talking about the requirement that allows us to be able to not go out to bid.
Correct.
Then that'll dollar amount.
Correct, yeah. Mary Jo, do you want to comment anymore on that?
Yeah, our, our policy says anything over $10,000, we have to get three informal bids for, and by the time we get three bids back on these technology devices right now, they have no stock. So that's the challenge that we're having, you know, when, and Todd knows how much these devices are, so it's not like we're gonna be subject to price gouging or anything like that. I mean, we order, I think, one of the 30, 30 Chromebooks with the charging card, when we had the mobile labs, were right around $18,000, $19,000 for that large of a set, with the, with the charging pod and all that stuff, so that's kind of where we're, that was the reason for it.
And financially, Mary Jo, we're good?
Um, yeah, yeah, there's, some of the, honestly, there, you know, we aren't paying for subs right now, at all, so. We get $0, and you know, if we get, we're gonna get CARES money, like Nikki's gonna talk about them, what we don't know is what's gonna happen on the backend with our state school fund, what they're gonna do with that. But just for this year, if we use hypothetically the amount that we would normally spend on substitutes in the classroom, I mean, that's usually about $60,000 a month, so I think we have some leverage there. Plus, we didn't already allocate the beginning fund balance that's higher this year too, so we have that too. But I, we're not going to spend all of that by any means, but.
No, and we're, we're still gonna be very, very conservative and thoughtful about spending, and, and just because it's there doesn't mean we should spend it. I think we should go into this whole thing safer rather than sorry later, so. Any other questions about that? So I talked about the facility at Aiken, and the, there was some, a few other smaller structural damage, but overall minor structural damage, so, and we're, we're looking at that, some of that stuff we'll be able to fix ourselves, and, and, but, at the same time, we applied for and received a $25,000 seismic assessment grant from the Technical Assistant Program through Oregon Department of Education, and received it. And, and so right after the earthquake, literally within a minute of, from the earthquake, Bob had texted me and said, "We just had an earthquake," I said, "I know," and he said, "That's, it was that stupid seismic grant." And we jokingly talked about that. But the, the grant will allow us to have an assessment, to assess our current conditions and facilities, and, and it will assess the current conditions of our district's buildings to withstand a significant earthquake or other seismic event, so we're, we're happy to, to be able to have that. And then, we've been, I know Taryn's been pushing a lot of information out, and including the board on it. You already know that the governor has canceled school for the remainder of the, of the year. We continue to get updates weekly on what that distance learning looks like, and what it should include. Last week, we finally received final guidance on our ninth through 11th graders, and, and what that's going to look like for them. Obviously, we'd already learned about what, what it was gonna look like for our 12th graders, our senior students. And we're still working through some stuff. This week, we're supposed to receive guidance on K8, which we anticipate to look very similar to what we've already received. Probably the most important thing is, is people want to know, are we going to be giving grades? And I think they'll follow suit with a pass, pass incomplete grade, just like they have for the other, the other levels. And so, some other things that we're still looking at, you know, we're kind of winding down to the details of it, we are offering parents opportunities to come in and pick up their students' materials from their desks, for example, and we are actually bagging that stuff up, and then schools are contacting parents, so that parents can come and pick it up, so they're not actually coming into our buildings. So we're doing that at all, at all levels. We're, we're looking at getting medications, so students took specific medications, we're looking, getting those, how we're getting those medications home to families. We're continuing to look at ways in which students can access the internet or have access to technology, so we're still finding students who, if we aren't able to get ahold of them, we finally, you know, figure out what the real issue is, and it may be that they need a Chromebook, so we're, we're getting those checked out. So one thing that everybody's asking about is graduation, and what are we doing for students who are supposed to be graduating this year? And I'll just say that the high school crew is working hard, they're meeting with their leadership kids and some seniors, they're talking with parents, and they're trying to determine what that's going to look like. And I think they have some really good ideas, but I do want you to know that they're not just making those decisions independently, they're working together with, with students and parents to determine the best course of action for that, so. And, let's see, we are going to move ahead with some projects. Now that school's canceled, we're gonna start some of those facilities projects early, since we're not in the buildings. We're gonna be working on some of our signature remodels that we had slated for, to start in summer, we're gonna start on those now, because we can. And, and so, that's going on, Bob and his, his custodial crews, maintenance and ground crews are gonna go ahead and get started on some of their summer projects as well. And I just have to, just give a huge shout out to Bob and his, his crew, they have done a phenomenal job, and work so hard. They have done a phenomenal job and worked so hard sanitizing and disinfecting and making our workplace safe. Because all of us still have to go into the building. I mean, Mary Jo's there right now and we had somebody in our own building that was tested last week and, and they came, they left the building for like 48 hours alone. They quarantined it and then they came in and they did a major overhaul, a major sanitation, sanitization of the entire building. And they do that each and every time we, we find out if somebody's been exposed and they let us know. They go in and they do the same thing. So just so thankful that they've worked so hard at this. So we appreciate that a lot. Next is budget. So we've had a lot of discussion. I've have, have at least two meetings a week with ODE and COSA. And these are some of the main things. They expect a $2 billion revenue shortfall at a minimum. They think that's approximately 10 to 15%. There's been a lot of questions about whether or not we're going to receive SSA funding. And at this point, all we know is that House Speaker Kotek and a few others are not in favor of postponing the new tax. But they may very well determine not to give the full allocation. But as Mary Jo mentioned earlier, even though we might have that, those funds available, they may use that money to make, to supplement the state school fund. So they may very likely make cuts to the state school fund, but, but it won't be as hard of a hit if they use that money towards that. So it really, they've even actually just talked about adding that money directly to the state school fund. So there's been a lot of discussion around that. They are going to have a special session, but they said that's probably not going to be until after the May 20 revenue forecast. So this CARES Act, I, I asked a lot of questions about the CARES Act in our last meeting. I was kind of hounding them and they didn't know a lot about it, but they're supposed to have more information for us at this Friday's meeting. So the CARES Act will offer $122 million for K-12 education. And this money is going to be applied to districts or distributed to districts. You have to apply for the money, but it'll be distributed based on the Title I formula. And so somebody said, "Well, what if you're not a Title I school?" And I, they think that if you're not a Title I school, you're not eligible for the money. So, so we're, we're hopeful that will help in this. But, but as Mary Jo said earlier as well, we don't know how they're going to utilize those funds. And if, if this may just make us, make it not hurt so bad, you know, the SSA money and the CARES Act money, if they make major cuts to the state school fund. Mary Jo, did you want to add anything to that?
They, they hit on the uses of it. And I think that there was like nine different uses, but they're really, really broad. And so that's where it could actually pick up if we had declining state school fund. So that was good. They didn't, they said that they were working on a fix for the Title I school, people that aren't Title I school.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, probably because all the business managers were flipping out about it in the chat. But, but yeah, they said it's the same allocation as Title I, but the rules aren't going to be the same as, at all. So, and it's going to be an EGUMS grant, but that you, it's just going to be a straight award that you don't have to apply for.
Have you heard that they were going to add the SSA money potentially to the state school fund?
They didn't even, they wouldn't even comment.
Oh.
ODE wouldn't even comment on SIA fund.
Oh, that, that wasn't, that was just maybe a project, just a thought that, you know, maybe that would happen, but not sure.
And then the other thing that they're doing with state school fund is they're taking your second quarter December ADM.
Yes.
And that's going to be, and then they're applying your normal December to June ratio because Oregon has a tendency to lose students towards the end of the year. We don't seem to have that big of a difference. But, but that's going to roll into next year. So they were cautioning people to be careful because they might end up with declines in year three.
And our enrollment was actually up, like 50 students.
50, yeah.
Good for us. And finally, this is something that I thought that the, the board might want to have some discussion on. And maybe Eric, this, you can probably explain it a little bit better than I, I can. But I know the county is working on, you called it a POD, I believe. Is it POD?
Well, a POD is technically the point of dispersal. And the sheriff's department doesn't want to call it a POD because it would be more of a point of testing. So it's a little bit different than a POD.
And that is the availability, offering availability to drive through testing for COVID-19 and potentially vacci- vaccinating folks in the case that there was a vaccination that was created to, to help with this. And so they've been working on a plan for that and, and looking for a potential location. And we discussed a little bit about what, if potentially we had a location that the school district could offer, we thought about the, the high school. I wasn't sure if it was something that we even had the ability to say yes to because I didn't know if it had fallen under the executive order of the government or the governor. I did ask Colt Gill and I included that in my message. And he said it doesn't and that he just offered a few things to consider in, in making the decision. I also ran the, the idea by a few different folks. And one thing, if we use the high school as that location to consider is that we, we are running buses up there every day. So our buses go to the high school where they get the food to distribute to students. And then they also pick up any work packets or supplies. And then our instructional assistants who are riding those buses are actually meeting at those locations. And the other thing that's happening is that when we knew we had to start doing our distant learning, distance learning, our tech department added, I'm not sure what they're called, but essentially they're points of contact. So students could show up to our parking lots in their vehicles and gain access to the, to our internet services. So we do have students who are, especially in the afternoon, sitting in cars, doing their, their schoolwork because they don't have internet access at home or they don't have good enough internet access at home. And we even see some teachers out there sometimes because they've made a video and their own internet doesn't allow them, the, the time to upload something is too long. So they, they show up and connect through our internet and upload it more quickly. So, and then of course, we have, we still have some teachers who are still coming into the buildings because they prefer it or they don't have access to some of the technology at home. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys all of the information. Obviously, we want to be part of supporting our community in this pandemic and being, you know, a place that we, we can help people get back on their feet and get going again. But I didn't feel comfortable just making this decision on my own, so I wanted to.
Nikki, could I say something real quick? Sure. I just, two other things I wanted to add to that is we have work pickup happening in front of our building. So there's a lot of traffic with kids coming in to pick that up. And there's also a lot of foot traffic picking up lunches, just people coming and showing up to pick them up on their own. So I just want to make sure that was part of it.
Because you're a feeding, feeding location.
Yes, there's a lot of traffic.
Nikki, I had two things before you go on. I want to go back to the work being done at the high school. And I'm assuming part of that is setting up the electrical. And I think, weren't you able to, to acquire that at a much lower cost than we thought at the beginning? Is that?
Are you talking in the VOTech building?
Yes, like the transformer?
Yeah. Yeah, it looks at this point like we are not going to have to upgrade to a different transformer based on what they were able to do to change out the switches versus adding something completely different. So it looks like that our current transformer will be able to handle the, the load. And, and so that would, that would in the end save us some costs. It's still an expensive project.
Like $50,000. I mean, it wasn't quite a large cost for a transformer.
Yeah, well, what it did was it put us into a different category, a different level, which in the end was more, a larger monthly payment. And so, yeah, over time, it was, it was a pretty significant amount of money.
And then my last point is back to the setting up a POD or a PET or whatever. But I, I would, I would want you to contact or pace our insurance to be sure that there's coverage for that. Because it just, as you listen to claims, like people on the ocean line are there filing claims because they got sick. And I would think that there might be someone who was tested in our parking lot and they weren't happy and would file a claim against us. But just to see what, what they say. And then second, who's going to do that? You know, are we going to contract with like St. El's or?
No, it's, it's actually not our test. It's so the county is putting that together. And I believe, Eric, isn't it the, the county health department that would be managing that, those systems?
Yes, so it's actually our ICS team, the incident command system team, that is putting this together. We have 100 nasal pharyngeal swabs available to us to use. And, and we're going to get multiple batches of these 100. It's going to be all outside, it's going to be completely dry up. So nobody's going to get out of their car. We may have a couple of walk-ups to the site. But it's just about getting our numbers, getting the people tested so that we know that, "Hey, look, you're tested positive, you should be quarantined and not out infecting other people." So the more tests that we can get will help facilitate, you know, flattening that curve. We had also, Nikki and I also had discussed, just to be clear, about the usage of the baseball building, the concession stand area out there. There's bathrooms out there for our workers and possibly a point for a little bit of storage and maybe using that concession stand as well. And we also have, I can't remember what they call electrostatic, or we're getting some electrostatic sprayers, which is basically a spray down thing to, to disinfect everything. So it'd be our intention that A would only be the workers that use that, the facility, and basically everybody that potentially were infected would never even get out of their car.
So I'm hoping the county is getting funding and then will, because that's going to require a lot of manpower.
Yeah, so it's going to be through volunteer and county employees that put this together. The tests itself are all provided by the Oregon Health Authority. And, you know, yeah, it's going to be, it'll be quite the, quite the deal. The date that we have for this is April 29, which is next week. It's the tentative date that we put out there. And with setup and take down, it's going to take a considerable amount of time.
Well, that'd be great. Thank you.
Eric, are you guys just, are you planning just like a one-day testing?
Yeah, at this point in time, so, so the concept behind the testing also for us as the ICS is also preparing for that POD, right? That point of dispersal, which that's actually dispersing a vaccine. So this is going to kind of ramp up into something bigger. Whether it's at the high school or not, I don't know. Because it's hopefully schools back in session when the vaccine comes out. But at least gives us the opportunity to make sure we get all of our ducks in a row for, because that's going to be a huge thing where we have thousands of vaccines to get out and potentially, you know, tens of thousands of people coming through a POD at that point.
Good, thank you.
Um, could I, could I, I'm sorry, could I say one more thing? Just I'm thinking through this. When you guys are making your decision, we're facing so many obstacles at the high school for kids getting their work done. And I am concerned that if we put this in the middle of all that, we're then asking parents to feel okay sending their kids to the high school where people are testing for this, they think they have it or potentially have it. I'm completely on board with the reason to do it and I support it 100%. But in balancing it with what we're trying to do for the kids, I'm just wondering if there's another location that might not mix what we're trying to do with kids with what, with this other necessary thing. Just putting, putting that out there.
Jody, yeah, thank you. So Nikki, go on with your report then, I interrupted.
Um, no, that is, I believe that's all I have. Oh, no, it's not all I have. The final and the most important one is that, as I think all of you already heard, Lisa Longoria was named Oregon Middle School Principal of the Year. And because of everything that's going on, we, we were actually in the middle, so, so usually COSA comes out and they fly out and they do this in person. And because that's not happening right now, we had to sort of switch gears. And so we were having, we were scheduled to have a Zoom meeting and it was our leadership meeting. And, and, and so we were just talking about the security of Zoom and how there's been this discussion about in Zoom, how, how these meetings have been interrupted or people have gotten into these meetings and, and crashed the party, if you will. And so we were having that discussion and I get a text message from Toby. "Some guy named Craig just got into our meeting." And then I think, I can't remember if it was Marshall, somebody, no, Marshall knew he was coming on, but somebody else was like, "There's some guy named Craig in this meeting." And, and so we ended up surprising Lisa with the news that she was selected as the Oregon Principal, Middle School Principal of the Year. And really quickly, I just wanted to read this. And by the way, she was selected by the Oregon Association of Secondary Schools administrators. And somebody, one of the OASSA president wrote, "Principal Longoria has been a powerful and innovative educator in supporting students who have been historically underserved. Under her leadership and guidance, students in the Ontario School District have been afforded educational frameworks that have opened opportunities for students and empowered them to reach previously unattainable goals. Her leadership acts as an example of the impact that educational leaders can have in inspiring all educators to refine their practice and focus their efforts." And, and then I wrote that Lisa is one of the, the most genuine, brave and compassionate and talented educators that I've ever had the pleasure of knowing. She enters into each and every decision from a standpoint of what is best for kids. Her personal experience and time spent in the classroom has helped to mold her into the one-of-a-kind leader that she has become today. Ontario School District is grateful she is ours. So, you know, we, we're all quarantined to home, but at some point, we would like to really do this more formally. But it's such an honor for us to be able to have her working in our district and serving our kids and being a partner to us. So congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you, Nikki. And like I said in our meeting, it's an honor for not just me, but my building, our district and our town. Like, it's amazing for Ontario to be, to have that recognition. And the middle school of all schools that, that people really looked down on the middle school for many years. Our team has worked really hard to change that around.
Elise, if I could add, I'd like your response to the article and the- At least if I could add, I liked your response to the article and the the paper when you did talk about the whole group that helped that. So.
Yeah, my my own group, my team in our building, um, I think Chad and I have really, um, and not just Chad and I, but when Jody was there as well, we've created a really great team that isn't, it's gonna do the hard that that are gonna do the hard work and not be resistant and they're gonna do what's best for kids. And then I have the the team of administrators here as well, Nikki, with all of the other administrators. Um, it's a really cohesive team and a great group of mentoring each other.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Then I guess there's no public comment. And I don't know, I think the notice of the meet meeting, they can send questions or comments before the meeting. I don't have the announcement. I don't know if we received anything. No. Jolene, thank you. So we'll go on to the business number one, the May Roberts Hood HVAC project. I guess we have a description in board book with the details. Any question on that? And if not, I need a motion to approve the project.
Can can you tell me what the description in board book is? Am I missing something there?
I I didn't see a description.
Oh. Okay, I don't have that up. Is there an explanation of what that is, I guess, if we?
I'll take a stab at it, even though I don't know a lot about it. Um, so what it is is Pam in the food service department, she, um, has multi levels that she actually has to get approval for from O D E and the federal food service before she can do any project. But this was one of theirs that was, um, we, you know, we did some of the other kitchens before where they have like cooling and heating in the kitchen so that it's not so hot there in the summer. And then I think it was just replacing all the hoods in there with a newer model. And it's the reason that it's before you is because it's in excess of the seventy five thousand that Nikki can approve.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'll make a motion to approve May Roberts Hood. Whatever it's called. Okay, I don't have two screens, so I can't read what it says.
Second, I can read. We have a second.
I I second it.
I have a motion in a second to approve the May Roberts Hood HVAC pro- project. And I'll do a roll call vote. Renee?
Yes.
I'll go myself. Yes. Eric?
Yeah.
Blanca?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. We all vote for that. Next, I'll ask Vice Chair Corn to give us a report on the Eric Evans notice.
Okay. Um, we met last week and we discussed the tort claim notice. I'm notifying the board that Nancy Hungerford has agreed to do the investigation and it will begin tomorrow.
Thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I don't, I think that that's all we can do on that item. Item three business would be to a motion to approve the board self evaluation project using the same OSBA form or an upgrade if they have one that we used last year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to use the same, uh, system we used last year.
Thank you. I have a motion in the second to approve the same OSBA board evaluation uh, s- system, I guess I'll call it, that we used last year. Then I'll do a roll call vote. Although at first, yes, Eric?
Yeah.
Derek?
Yes.
Blanca?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
All vote in favor for that. Uh, next item is approval of the budget, the board budget goals. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the board budget goals for the twenty 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 one year.
I second that.
So I have a motion in second to appro- to approve the board budget goals for the twenty twenty one school year. I'll do a roll call vote. Blanca?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Eric?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. I'll vote in favor of that motion. Next item, number five, would be approval of board policy B D D B, B D D C board meeting agenda. Uh, we did talk about that. And maybe someone could remind me what we decided.
Um, you want me to just go ahead and make a motion? So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, B D D B, uh, B D D C with the changes uh, that the super has twenty four hours to respond unless more time is needed for the research. And, uh, we changed the five days to seven days notice for the board. Is that right?
Into it. They had the vice chair.
Oh, yes, thank you. And I'll add that to my motion as well.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the board policy B D D B, B D D C board meeting agenda with the changes to add the vice chair to change five calendar days to seven. And I is there one? I'm sorry, was there one more?
It was about the questions of giving the superintendent twenty four hours, wasn't it? Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, and I am I doing the wrong one? Was that that one was on the, uh, BD, that one as well?
No, yeah, and I, well, let me amend your motion if I could. I want to add the words that any person, member of the public, uh, staff, board member can make a presentation at the work session of the board for an item that they would like added to the agenda to give the details of what that topic is. And the board then will have enough information to decide if they want to add that item to the agenda. And I can maybe wordsmith that better.
And maybe we had decided to put this thing off, right? And we can add that and?
I'd have Brian help me write the words since that's what he does. And then we can look at it next month.
Yeah, so I'll withdraw my motion anyways.
So we'll we'll revise the policy and bring it up next month. Number six then on the business would be approval of B B F board members standards of conduct. And that was the that was, just a minute. I think that was the one that we approved last September. And we're just going to, the reason for it is to review and to prove it again. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the B B F policy and the board members stand standard of conduct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So I have a motion in a second to approve policy B B F board member standard of conduct. I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Blanca?
Yes.
Derek?
No.
Renee?
Yes.
Eric?
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes. So we have four yes, one no. The next item we have to approve the board superintendent operating agreement, but I think we discussed, we need to compare the old documents that Vice Chair Corn, I think, just sent to everyone.
I just sent it, my, I'm sorry, um, Director Blackaby, I just sent it to Jolene and Nikki and yourself. And I figured that Jolene could first it to the board members.
Okay. And we'll discuss that. We'll have time to review again, make any changes uh, prior to the well, before seven days before we need to get board book out, but it'll give us a chance to revise it. And then we'll have a rough draft to look at what the revision that we looked at today, plus what we had before that we're trying to combine the two.
Yes.
So with that, I'll move on to item eight, approval of resolution nineteen, I guess, dash fifteen dash A, a resolution acknowledging the unanticipated revenue and authorizing the appropriation for expenditures general fund. Mary Jo, do you want to explain that?
So what this is, is, um, we budgeted twenty five thousand dollars in legal expenses. And we've spent twenty four thousand six hundred so far. And um, and that was just through the end of March on one of them and the end of February on another. Which I don't think the other ones can be very high, but I don't think there's any way that we will stay under that amount. So what I'm doing is recognizing some of our beginning fund balance that was higher than what was budgeted and then increasing our expenditure by the same amount.
Any question? If not, I need need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, I will, uh, recuse myself from this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve resolution nineteen dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
I second that.
So I have a motion in the second to approve resolution nineteen dash fifteen dash A, resolution acknowledging unanticipated revenue and authorizing the appropriation for expenditures general fund. I'll do a roll call vote. Derek?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Blanca?
Yes.
And I guess I'm not sure if I should recuse myself, so perhaps I guess won't vote. I'm not sure what the what the money's for. But we'll have three in favor, so we do pass that. Uh, number nine would be approval of board protocols. And as we discussed, I think we only had um, two changes would be to change in the first paragraph, item one. The agenda will be distributed to board members at least seven, not rather than five days prior to the meeting. And then number three would be if a board member has a question about the items, he or she will contact the superintendent prior to the board meeting for clarification or to ask an answer to a question and to to contact her at least twenty four hours before the meeting. And if that is not po- possible, she could explain that she needs more time.
Are we gonna hold off on this one as well because they kind of coincide with the B D D B?
And we can, if other board members. Renee, do you want to wait till next month?
We can. If you if you want to try and put them all together, that's fine. We, I mean, we're technically, we're operating and under this right now because it was passed in seventeen.
Well, Derek, what do you want to wait till next month?
I think that's a good idea.
And let's do the same thing. Let's, uh, each board member review. Blanca, I'm sorry, didn't, but I think we have a majority that if the board members could review it and provide a changes so we can prepare a rough draft that we can discuss next month. We can do that. And then the last item we added to the agenda would be a motion to authorize the board chair to meet with the superintendent to negotiate a renewal of a two year extension of her contract.
Will you say that again?
I would like a motion to authorize the board chair to meet with the superintendent to 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 renew her contract with a two year extension.
I had, uh, oh, wait, sorry, I didn't know if I was talking or not. Um, I had brought up during our last meeting, you know, some kind of a work plan about, uh, are we not gonna have that?
If I think of what you meant about have goals and things that she needs to work on, we're gonna have that. Well, certainly we need to discuss that before you go negotiate a contract. So everybody's clear before the the contract. Also, again, I'll bring up my going concern issue with with all that going on.
Any other comment? Blanca, any comment?
No, I don't have comments.
Renee, any comment?
No.
Okay, well, I think that we should approve the resolution. So I'd like a motion to, again, appoint the board chair to meet with the superintendent to to negotiate renewal of her contract for a two year term.
I like.
Wait, wait, wait. How can we do that without understanding the terms of the contract?
Well, this is this is what we've done every year again. So the I think we're down to either you vote yes or you vote no. We've we've already talked about it. And this is the same thing that we've done every year, except that we do every year. It's the same way we do it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to modify your request for a contract extension to a one year extension at this point.
I would agree with that.
Okay, then.
I would second that.
No more discussion. We'll vote on the amendment to to authorize the board chair to meet with the superintendent to renew her contract with a one year extension?
Chair Blackaby?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that I think the main motion is a one year contract extension, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think you have a motion for a two year that's consecutive.
Oh, oh, okay. So we're down to the a a motion to authorize a board chair to meet with the superintendent to negotiate one year extension on her contract? Is there is there a second? I have, I think, a motion in the second.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Why is it a one year instead of two?
Well, the reason I said two is that we nor normally extend the contract each year. And we didn't do it last year. So my point was to make up the year because it wasn't done last year.
So are we extending it for one year or is it a one year contract?
It was the motion was to extend her contract for one year. She has one year on her contract now. We have an extended one year, so she will have a two year contract. Normally she'd be your contract. Renee, did you have a?
That that was my intent at at this time to extend it one year further than where it is right now. Um, see, listening to the comments, I felt like that was a Um, see, listening to the comments, I felt like that was a, a way to give credibility to both sides, if you will, here of that. If, if people don't want to extend it for the full two years that Director Blackaby was indicating, if we could extend it one year, that would put it out two years for her.
Any other comment or discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. Uh, I'll vote first. I vote yes. Eric?
Yeah.
Blanca?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Did I call everybody? I think we have all in favor of that motion. Uh, next item on the agenda. We normally have other topics, but I've lost my, does anyone have a?
Do we? Uh, Nikki, do you want, do we want to have a discussion? Or like, is it a consensus for using the high school? What, what are we looking at here? I don't think it needs to be a, a full-on vote. What, what were you thinking?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be, I, I don't know that it's a matter that we would vote on, but I just didn't feel comfortable making that decision on my own. So, um, um, I do, as my suggested, need to reach out to PACE and find out what they have to say. And then if, um, board members want to weigh in, I don't know if you want to weigh in here or you want to send me an email, um, on your thoughts on that.
Um, one other thing that I forgot to mention about that before was that the, the, uh, and Mike had brought this up a little bit and I forgot to mention it, but we, we have a MOU and a liability waiver, uh, from, uh, the county. It's already prepared, not for this specifically, but we've had one of these for the test of events.
Yeah, and I, I thank you, Eric. The other idea too would just to have the, the city county insurance that the county has and the school is insured for this event.
Eric, would the parking lot at TDCC work for that as well?
Uh, so to be perfectly frank is that TDCC has decided not to let us, uh, utilize that parking lot.
I see.
Um, an option may be instead of using the front parking lot, using our back parking lot and using the concession stands and the bathrooms back there for storage and bathroom. That would keep it separate from student traffic.
And, and you know, I think we looked over as a team, we kind of scoured over Ontario real fast to try to determine what had a large enough, uh, facility. Cause even though we only have a hundred tests, I mean, we anticipate there could be, you know, 200 vehicles that come by there. So, um, I know once I kind of get word and if everybody's okay with this, then, uh, us as a team will meet and determine exactly, uh, what the logistics of our, are gonna look like.
Eric, could I ask, did you consider the fairgrounds?
We, we did. And, uh, it was one of our first places. The, the problem is with the fairgrounds is that the, it's not maintained well. So there's a lot of dirt, uh, very little blacktop and a lot of the blacktop has holes. And I mean, we anticipate that we're gonna have a wide variety of vehicles that may not work well at the fairground.
Okay.
I like Jody's idea, if others do.
I, I agree.
I, I would totally concur. We, we need a place to do it and that we appreciate anything the school willing to help with that way.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. So I have the agenda now. I guess the last to be taught, taught, topics for future board meetings or work sessions. And again, I think we can already discuss, that can be done. It doesn't have to be done now. There's others way to do.
We need to get these, um, policies and board, board operating agreements. Those need to be finished.
We will, uh, I'm sure we can get it out this week. So we'll have the whole month to work on it. Jolene, are you listening? I think we can do that.
Yes, I am. And yes, I can.
And I think again, I know there's a comment I missed, but I think we'll put them also on the website. Don't we, on the school, uh, website?
Nikki, can we put the policy in front of the board next time where they approve the program numbers for inter-district, uh, transfer agreements? Um, I think we put, that policy says that it will be, um, reevaluated annually. I can put that together and get it out right away.
Any other, any other topics?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn. I'm sure we're all in favor. I won't do a roll call vote. Thank you all for the board meeting. I appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Bye.